...for anything with accomplice. But it's, it's a lot, but I think we have to get in the building and take them to court.
Step one is you do pretty much have to do it, and if you've got a short leash, then that would be up next week. And after that, if it is a imminent danger, yes, we can get him to court and say, we need, you know, the order allowing our demolition ASAP, and as long as he's got his due process, which even really makes a difference, then we can, and we have court order, and we should be taken, but, you know, early has that due process. The first step of due process is giving him notice, giving him that chance. Now, I'm graduated, who was actually promoting right now, we could probably hop up and go do something. But, you know, it's not quite the next thing, mind me.
Yeah, no, it's getting worse.
No, the roof is, I mean, I'm no building specialist, and the roof is getting worse, it's collapsing in itself.
The north wall and the east wall at the top is leaning out about two foot on chestnut, and the south wall on second street is leaning out.
Yeah, that makes a difference.
That's why I say, if they took one golden, the other one would be gone.
I can, I can check it, so the city of Cato, the old Cato White, um... As you go down Elder River Street, the bricks on the north side of Royal White Avenue started falling into traffic, um, and they had to close the sidewalk because of the risk. The city of Cato came running and basically took out that part of the wall because it was posing an imminent risk to traffic safety. So whatever Cato involved likely applied here the same.
Right, it's that imminent part that makes a difference. I mean, if it's in the immediate margins, yes, probably goes without even a court order, if it's immediate, you'd say.
Oh, it's got a lot of parts all within there.
But so would you believe, basically, an engineer would say it's in there?
That would help, that would help.
Yeah, Chastain was the company that, that I built me. The last time I blew, Chastain whenever required our building, and, um... Don't call, don't call him with the one that took it down.
It was, um...
It was Chastain and then...
No, it was, um... I'm going to mail it to you.
Um...
In the Chastain office?
Oh, yeah, Keith Brandal.
Yeah, Keith Brandal, yeah, that's who did the last one, yeah.
They...
I'm sure Chastain could have somebody come in and look at it, absolutely.
We still got Jeremy, he's a structural engineer, like, asking me to come. I mean, was it just an exterior observation, or did we have to go inside the building? There's a lot more to go on.
You can see it from the back alley, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, unless we have granted access, we wouldn't have the right to go inside. We'd have to do it in studio, but, yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you could do that, we need some more animation, that would give me a little quicker, but based on what I've been told for this, um, you know, relating to this process. But it's just in fact, so...
Did you say something to the main party?
It was Keith Brandal, yeah.
Do we have an address, or...
One on one North Chastain.
What is this?
One on one North Chastain.
It's the corner of the, of the, the east and south walls, um...
But I remember Carolyn Hackett went to county board meetings, and there was discussion because the V N S health risk is your safety issue, and because the taxes weren't collected, so then the county was kind of responsible. I don't remember what the outcome was, we take this comment, I'm not sure, but I know that we went to the county. We can buy the package one page, we told them that it was a safety issue.
All right, we have a first and a second, right? Okay, do you have a motion to approve the speaker's motion? Yes, I speak for the Department of Commerce.
I'll make the motion.
All right, you have a second?
Okay.
Any more discussion?
I think we could ask that we move it area, what we're calling.
Yeah, I, yes, and I'll say something to make it. World Hall, please.
Green, Porter, Sullivan, Nelson, Walden, Henry.
Yes.
All righty, up next, a motion to approve two thousand dollars for the assumption of that. For the purchase of our, um, page in our guidebook. Do you have a motion to approve that, please?
I make the motion.
You have a second? Any discussion? World Hall, please.
Baldwin, Porter, Green, Walden, Henry, Nelson.
All righty, up next, a motion to approve the Garwood lease for two thousand two hundred dollars. This is for where our wells are, wells are off the southern blacktop. Do you have a motion to approve that, please? Any, uh, second? Any discussion? World Hall, please.
Walden.
Yeah.
Nelson.
Yeah.
Smith. Baldwin. Porter.
Yeah.
Henry.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna kind of have to do... Yes, I'm gonna turn it over to the attorney over this next issue that has popped up from the Elevator Department of Revenue. So I'm gonna turn it over to him for a second.
So this is the one percent sales tax that we took care of last fall. I don't know if you remember that, but in November or so, we talked about it, because it's basically the law has changed and allowed the tax to be approved without a, without a referendum. Assuming that previously had a referendum, we just, to be cautious, decided we're going to bring an act force without the referendum. We didn't, so we did that, sent it into the Department of Revenue, they sent it back saying, oh, we can't approve this for reasons which I still couldn't play in this hand.
It's a weird technicality, but...
But part of this, I was looking at it, I thought maybe what the... Two things, first is that, uh, what we did in November was based upon what was existing in the city's code, which had not necessarily been amended to keep up with the statutory changes over time. And so I think when the Department of Revenue got that, even though what was extraneous in the code provision wasn't key to this sales tax provision, they said, oh, you know, we can't do that, approve it. So what I've done here, divided into two separate pieces. One is just that tax, and we can send it to V O R, saying, you know, we're reauthorizing the one percent tax. And then the other one is changing the city's code, you're going to be explaining this stuff, and you're just making this that, uh, tax issue for the same code. So the first ordinance is the one that will go to V O R. The second one is the one that will actually become part of the city code, because it's published earlier on, and there is one for me. Uh, and just to make sure you understand, a lot of the ordinances you guys adopt are not necessarily incorporated into your code. That's a whole separate process that we have to go through to do it. So that's where you have that language, it's underlined, it's cross-stated, and that's the stuff that can go into the code. If the ordinance doesn't have that, it's just an ordinance, it still has the effect of law, but it's not published by the ordinance. And in most cases, the tax provision is published, so we're just trying to make sure it's consistent with our quality.
So, and you will present the facts again, then?
The first one, yeah, general, we'll send that back to them, and then they, it should hopefully be seamless, because they currently are enforcing and adopting that, and as a matter of fact, their letter from the state, it doesn't really matter which you're gonna be, we're gonna be collecting this tax anyway, but, you know, I think if you want to trust them on that.
But they weren't plugged in, is why we put the one percent on?
No, they are. The one percent had applied all along, and the state, you know, and then this law changed. The I M L suggested, well, because the way of adopting the sales taxes change, it would revert to reenact this, even though you've had a referendum. V O R seemed to be suggesting, well, we don't have to do that, but if you do it, that's fine, you follow these guidelines. Correct.
I, I get what you're saying, this goes back to the tax that's already being collected. And then the governor gave each municipality the right to, that's an ordinance saying yes or no, who wants to continue. But it's, we're already paying that.
Right, and we voted on that.
Yes.
But they didn't like the way we did it.
We didn't like it, so that's why you have to...
So do you think they go through that?
I took exactly what they gave us for their language, that first ordinance is their language, they don't approve it, but I'm really upset.
So what, they're actually separate from the ordinance?
Yeah, they are, so this is ordinance number eight three one. Any more motion?
Yeah.
On the motion to pass, ordinance eight three one. All right, can we have a second? Okay. Any discussion? Senior? World Hall, please.
Nelson, Hunter, Walden, Porter, Green, Sullivan.
All right, up next, we have ordinance number eight three two, this is a motion to approve the ordinance amending sections, sections three dash one, and three dash one two of the city code relating to the Service Occupation and Retailers Occupation Act. I'll make the motion. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Senior, World Hall, please.
Porter. No. Nelson, Green, Sullivan, Walden, Hunter.
All righty, up next, a motion to approve the lease of the front of the water collector. A motion to approve that, please. On the motion. You have a second? Okay. World Hall, please.
Hunter.
Yes.
Porter.
Yeah.
Nelson.
Yeah.
Green, Sullivan, Walden.
All righty, up next, a motion to approve the equipment for the new police officer, Kevin Hughes, for two thousand dollars, if we can get him the equipment that's needed for his job, you got anything you want to add to that?
No, we just have to go over to Danville again, he got all the stuff, he's got some stuff, so, oh, we have the two thousand dollars on there.
What, so what is he gonna be able to bring?
Uh, no, he has a belt, uh, I'll give you holster, vest. Small thing, vest is a big part of that, I'm on the fourteen thousand dollars, shit, that's why I paid my money.
Would that be a weight, like, for you?
Yeah, so I think he has one that he can use for now, like I did, from previous apartment, and then once it comes in a year ago. He got, I can help all that for five bucks, a couple hundred bucks, uh, thirty-three grand to cover it all.
You have a motion to approve that, please? All right, any discussion? Senior, World Hall, please.
Sullivan, Porter.
Yeah.
Green, Walden, Hunter.
Yeah.
Nelson.
All righty, up next, a motion to hire some summer workers. We had a few people ask, apply, and we kind of agreed that we needed a hold, that we would at least start out with two, no more than that. Um, it was kind of that Aaron, Jack, that is, I don't feel they did it right. They would be paid, uh, minimum, minimum wage. You have a motion to approve that? To approve up two two, some of the workers.
I make the motion, if you're happy to see the general workers, uh, which include the area.
All right, you have a second, also. All right, any discussion? Senior, World Hall, please.
Walden.
Yeah.
Nelson, Green, Sullivan, Porter, Hunter.
Yes.
So up next, a motion to hire a summer recreation director, um, we did have one person apply. I talked to her, she was interested, and then, um, she thought there's some more, and she is no longer interested. Um, so might keep it open for maybe, I mean, so does it get out for another month? Maybe might, I am, keep the dog posted if anybody wants it, but as of right now, we do not have anybody to run summer rep.
She won't be...
She'll listen to me, you know, I try to.
She's having that all the time.
Yeah. So I just want to let you know, because we're not gonna do anything with this, uh, if you do get somebody to apply, then we can bring it up off the, uh, the menu. All righty, up next, a motion to approve two thousand dollars for Rockford Street, you know, versus, for example, for, you know, oil. All right, you have any discussion? World Hall, please.
Green, yeah, Porter, Sullivan, Nelson, Walden, Hunter.
Yes.
All righty, up next, a motion to approve the rain gauge and overflow meter, this is for the subdivision.
Rain gauge and overflow meter, no.
Okay, it's, it's not there.
It's gonna be out the pump station, pump station.
Uh, go ahead. Yeah, I remember talking about it, but I, I couldn't remember. All right, you have a motion to approve that, please? On the motion. All right, you have a second? Any discussion? Senior, World Hall, please.
Nelson.
Yeah.
Hunter.
Yes.
Walden.
Yeah.
Porter.
Yeah.
Green, yeah, Sullivan.
All righty, up next, a motion to approve two thousand eight hundred eighty dollars for hauling and leveling a rock for the Backsmire subdivision.
Yeah, so we had a little bit of settling of, um, aggregate that's, you know, there for the road, so it's just, uh, hauling a hundred tons of rock, leveling it, and vacuuming it, and getting ready for oil and chip, approving, uh, old house fires that need work.
A motion to approve that, please? Uh, any discussion? Senior, World Hall, please.
Porter, Nelson, Green, Sullivan, Walden.
Yeah.
Hunter.
Yeah.
Are you gonna have it about, is it, is Jack, is he ordering order the, um, higher records that we need to have then, or will that be on the... Or... All right, he was ordering something special because he wanted to...
Jack, yeah, Jack wants to order a flushing height, automatic flushing height, that's what he was talking about, yeah.
Yeah.
He, he pulled it off.
He, he pulled it off, I was up at the city hall.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll probably talk about it, create a hole next, and then put it on if you desire it, but, uh, yeah, he didn't want it off.
He may not have to pick that up yet.
All right, up next, a motion to approve the employee handbook provision regarding legal representation. So, uh, as you can see, we, I had mentioned this, that we did a whole idea, but we're not gonna be able to get to it, because it is a large undertaking of creating one day, um, handbook. So in order to keep up, because we have made a lot of changes to the handbooks, we wanted to go ahead and just approve this part, but then also show where we have made the changes over these last couple of years. And then, um, the next administration can go in and, uh, if, if they so choose in the board, or if they so choose to create a one unit handbook. So, but, anyway, we need to get that part in the legal representation, well, that's why you have all the other components. And this also stated where we made the changes, and, so, you know, when we added Easter, um, you know, people to serve as witnesses, and it didn't exceed that. Any discussion, I have one.
I believe this has been around a couple of times, I think this is really what you asked. So does the, um, excuse that, provisions in the, um, handbooks, if it's basically says, the employee is, um, called and testified, will provide assistance in any correct direction, course of proceedings, then the city shall provide legal representation for the W employee or the city. So...
For, like, the...
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Raise the motion to approve that, please?
What they can do.
All right, you have a second? Any discussion? Senior, World Hall, please.
Baldwin. Porter. Green, yeah, Walden, Hunter.
Yes.
Nelson.
All right, this is the next thing, it's kind of been around for a while, but a motion to approve total ordinance relating to impoundment of motor vehicles involved in certain criminal acts. This would be ordinance number eight three three.
There's still...
What do you like about it?
No, there's something that's still gonna get fixed. The, the hearing under six eight five D, it still says hearings are being held with maybe the whole.
The attorney, attorney.
Remember, it's...
It's part of the record law and all of your...
Right, yeah, I apologize, I knew you guys were gonna take this up, and they needed a hold, and I was expecting changes, and then they still, well, that's...
So, and you thought that you'd ask me to make changes, but, uh, I would think, well, it's, it's not the end of the world, we could amend it right here.
Yeah.
So it's not the end, yeah.
No, that's why.
Yeah, 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 but, no, I'll probably take the rapids, probably with...
I didn't want to, I guess, you know, have it come up, or, or...
Yeah.
I'm gonna guess, probably, I'm pure here, and I have one other thing, but...
G R, like, the...
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I'm sure it's right in the ordinance, but...
So we need to make a motion to amend that?
Yes, and then you'll vote on the amendment, and then, once that's done, then we'll vote on as a whole.
So I'll make the amendment to amend, uh, section six dash eight dash five, section D, number two, that, uh, it will be placed on the agenda for the next, uh, city council. Take out committee of the whole.
The reason for any of this, the whole, so they have to get rid of committee of the whole, yeah. So it, it changed that word to the federal. Yeah, it's just an example, you can take that next sentence out, because it's still relevant. Maybe it's there for the next regular...
Because you're, it has to be other than the council meeting, so if you can't, if you don't have a council meeting, then obviously when you hold the next...
Excellent.
It's gonna kind of just reprove for itself.
And I thought that we could certainly decide that the statutory authority requires that the hearing officer be...
It, it does.
So this isn't gonna, quite, yeah. And the hearing officer has to be the clerk.
I think that's why we changed this, committee being to the city council, but...
So it, that was very easier.
Yeah, the first is here. Yeah, first thing, statute has to run in term.
Yeah, so, but, it doesn't say, the hearing officer consists of the mayor to be held with.
Yeah.
The head judge.
Yeah, I guess...
Hearing officer should be, it'd be the attorney.
Yeah, I mean, I, and I'm, I'm trying to think how specific the statute was, because in some cases, the statute says the hearing officer will permit an entry, but then there's a completely different decision maker. You have to come from there. In this case, I'm not sure if it requires that the hearing officer make the decision, or, and I don't have the code, so I apologize. We can, let's go ahead and say, the hearing officer consisting comprised of the city attorney, along with the mayor and city clerk. And then, I take that a little bit, but it's not even, probably not gonna use this for a couple of months, I guess.
I don't know, maybe, yeah, I said I can't, I don't know.
Well, I would say before the word...
We need to push it off for a month or five, I can do. We need to push it off just a little, everything.
All right.
Right.
Well, I apologize for that.
I think you're gonna be able to do that.
I thought you guys had a pretty slight, we pushed this thing back. Literally, if you want to stand, there's no final conclusion.
I, I agree, let's, let's get it over with, it's, it's...
Just make it to the, you know, city attorney along with the mayor and chancellor.
Yeah. And then I'll look into that, and if that doesn't work, you can come back and just change that little bit on it, next, uh, next.
So we need a motion to approve amended amendments to, uh, ordinance eight three, eight three three. You have a second? Any more discussion on the amendment? We're voting on the amendment, yeah. All right, World Hall, please.
Walden.
Yeah.
Nelson.
Yeah.
Hunter.
Yes.
Green.
Yeah.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Porter.
No.
All righty, next, we're voting on ordinance number eight three three as amended. I'll make the motion to... We're repeating three three. Okay, I can, I can. Uh, any more discussion? Non-World Hall, please.
Nelson.
Yeah.
Green, yeah, Porter.
No.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Hunter.
Yeah.
Walden.
Yeah.
And, by the way, this, this is one of those ordinances that is gonna become part of the city code, so that's why yours is underlining it, you know, so I'll work with there, make sure it's changed. Talk about it, but, what you do, we'll send it off.
All righty, up next, we have ordinance number eight three four, this is a motion to approve ordinance amending city animal code provisions relating to shelters.
Do you have any question?
Go ahead, Gary.
Is this a subsection of the overall language of the cats, or is this kind of pretty soon?
Uh, subsection. This is in Animal Control, Chapter Four, and it's in section sixteen, with plus keeping the numerous dogs, and now it's gonna be a type of, uh, number of, like, dogs and cats, and that, and animal care, considering.
So is the, the one thing I was wondering was, it doesn't really spell out what the penalty is if you violate this. Is that in the other subsection?
Well, you got it, the code has a sort of catch-all violation, so that would be the very first. I don't recall that there's any other specific conditions in the animal control violation, um, but there is a overriding, um, overarching penalty provision, which says the violation would be considered on today or something like that.
Any more discussion? We have ordinance number eight three four. Once? On the, you have a second?
Hunter.
Any more discussion? World Hall, please.
Hunter.
Yes.
Porter.
No.
Nelson.
Yeah.
Green.
No.
Walden. Walden.
Yeah.
All right. Up next, we have discussion and action as necessary on sanitary sewer system phase two, a item probably brought to the board, any more you can add? I don't really know anything else, it'll be easy. Uh, next, we have discussion and action as necessary on the water system improvements project items is probably brought to the board.
No.
Uh, then we also have discussion and action as necessary on the water system improvements phase two, the new water plant facility. I do need to say, um, take a look at the film that's in the city hall, um, I kind of like the darkness, the darkness one. You know, if you have some time, say something to the guy, you know, take a look at the sample. And, uh, discussion and action as necessary on the Backsmire subdivision.
Uh, just a little update, yeah, I mean, we just approved the, you know, rocks we put in for the, um, for the road. Uh, we got oil and chip left, uh, this, this year, and then also just a little bit of cleanup along the, where Amrin, you know, the weather trenches were installed for electric and gas. And then also, I know there were some questions about the, the light bill, and Andrew Meyer working together to, uh...
That was the next question, yeah.
We don't, we don't have an answer yet, but we'll work on getting it.
You want off to...
Uh, yeah, so I, what we're gonna do is look, we're gonna look at the, the bill, previous to the lights being installed, and then, and the next bill, so I'd like to have those, uh, there are these two bills. Compare them.
Yeah, we got another round of public comments.
Um, I would just like to say, kind of, um, new, right, and it's only, um, how much I think that the job you did, um, and what you've done to drive to where you're at with the board, and to that, how to grow with me, um, I really like that, I thought I'd hear of you. I'm a new job, I'm not here to, you know, even, trying to run something to the community. But, I thought you know, that I appreciate the job you do, your job.
Like I said, I, I appreciate all that you guys have done. There's, I've nev- I've never taken anything personal, there's times that, yeah, I mean, we, we would find, like, for instance, you know, we had.
There was no black eye.
There's no black eye, no, there, there's not. And uh, you know, I, I grew up in politics, I mean, my dad, I mean, got kicked off township, well, voted out of township, over a very small thing, a schoolhouse, I mean, nineties. So, I totally get it, and you know, we're, we're a little person, the family's involved in that. And I, I love the community, I do, I'm, I'm not moving, I'm willing to stay for here. If I ever get married, I might end up building a house on the subdivision, can't do it now, single. But I'm, I'm not leaving, I'm, I'm also gonna be president, I'm, well, I'm already president, but I'm gonna be pride, but we're gonna be working together with the city. You know, I, I'm willing to help Eddie Albermann, I'm willing to help Port Bill, everybody that's still here, you know, I mean, as long as you want. Like I said, I, I've loved every, every one of you, you guys are really all of the people, and I'm happy for, you know, even you two. I never take a person, Joe, I, let me tell you something, I'll, the attorney is a witness to this. I, I have had people tell me, Joe, you were the one person that I said that, kind of people have come and told me to fire, I should have fired you. And one person told me, I mean, he was blunt, he goes, I had no balls to fire him, because he didn't like how you ruled in a, in a voting situation. I, I did, you know, I, I did, I did go that way, because here's the thing, this is how I, how I do think in politics, you know? Joe is doing his job. Yes, I, I voted against him when he was up for the board, because people came, a, a family came to me, and I, I felt that I owed him things, but, you know, that's fine. Um, but Joe did his job, did I like it? No, I, I didn't, but you know, he still continues to do his job. And, and we all, I mean, there's times that I, I, I may not have liked those like candy, or even Gary, Gary goes, you know, we're complete opposites on the um, the subdivision. Gary is still a friend, I mean, I, I, I mean, one person even said, why did you appoint Gary to your seat? When, you know, they were upset because he was against the subdivision, and he did, I appointed Gary to my seat when I became mayor. That, that's fine, Gary and I will always be friends, you all will, will still be friends, we, we agree, if we don't take a person like we do at the state level and at the federal level. That's, that's where the mess is, and we can get through these, these little challenges that we have, uh, coming up, because I felt that we have made great strides to move forward. And, and I, I, I feel optimistic about the community, I think that we will continue to move forward. We're gonna have these ups and downs, and, you know, patience is gonna be lost, but we'll, we'll come back to the next, go around, so. Anyway.
And I want to thank you for trying to explain the meeting.
Yeah?
And at all times, you can speak up, I mean, you've observed meetings, why agree all that, and it's been good to see. At times it has been, yeah.
And I also want to thank Matt, who knows if you'll ask the whole meeting for, for your board. He's moving on to the township, he got elected to, to the township, so it'd be a little bit more call work. Uh, yeah, probably. All right, there's nothing else.
And I don't know who, who to talk to about this.
Yeah.
When they came down my alley with the sewer and the water.
Uh huh.
And at the end of my property, that, that big iron, where the water connections are, whatever. Yeah, I get that. Anyway, there's big mounds of dirt, that thing is kind of, it's there, but it's not, it's not landscaped. I can't even go through there with my law, I can't walk through there. And it's never been, all the other up and down the alley was fixed gray, and mine is still.
So she, she actually, I mean, I don't know if this is, she was a part of phase one, but that was done.
It's been a.
It's, it's been a couple of years.
Two years, two years ago.
Yeah, okay, that's.
And I mean, it's, it's still a mess, no one, you know, I, I talked to a couple guys when I'd see them working somewhere, I've talked to Dana a couple of times, and she's talked to them. But no one comes and fixes it. So it's, it's a mess.
Well, um, I guess I could give an address.
One oh four South Focus. Real quick, I'll tell ya. Thank you very much.
Anything here?
Yeah, as far as the shelter deal, that did pass, right?
But, no, 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 Sony still has to do their thing.
No, no, I mean, what you admitted.
Yeah.
So, I'm now allowed five cats, no more. Or five dog, or. Two cats, three dogs, one.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, what happens if, I have more than that?
You would get a fine.
What's that fine?
Twenty-five dollars for animal.
A day?
That's how the.
Yeah.
So it's twenty-five a day? And. Who's, who's going to enforce this?
Let me, Seth, Dana, and the mayor, I mean, I wrote candy on the ticket, and I was finding when she had her chickens, so, that means those, those three, Seth, um, Dana and the mayor. Yeah, Dana is animal control.
And so are these shelters and rescues limited to dogs, cats? Anything, what, what?
It's how, I was, I was just written with a commercial area, um, whatever specified through the Department of Act. When I read that statement of that code, I mean, applicable, in compliance with the Animal Welfare Act, two twenty-five I L C S, and all applicable, applicable Department of Agriculture regulation.
So it's always been.
It's always been in there.
No, I, I understand that, I meant, I wasn't asking about the, the limit on personal pets. I'm talking about the rescue and the shelter. You, you're talking about a shelter for cats on my corner. Can someone come in and have a shelter for rabbits, or chickens, or?
No.
Domestic. Domestic, okay, all right, that was my question. I know I didn't ask it very well.
Okay, so if the shelter already has animals, and already, there's an ordinance, so how is she allowed to have all these animals? She moved here with her own personal animals being more, and our neighbors on the other side had to move. Because they have to, they need to get rid of animals, or.
Well, I don't know what happened, you're talking about the passage now.
Yeah, well, these people have been allowed, they've been allowed to do this.
Are you talking about the people with the school buskers now?
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is, okay.
But down the street from me, my neighbor's two door down, ended up selling their house over, and they were in the wrong, granted, they were in the wrong. But the city did, the city did force that issue.
Yes.
My feeling is the ci- the, the issue was forced with them, but it's not being forced with these people.
Well, well, it is, but it gets murky, because they're considered a five oh one C three, they're considered a charitable organization with a shelter. That's where it gets a little bit.